Okay, folks, four o'clock, we're gonna start the play, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks for coming, all. Approval of minutes, the executive session is seventeen, and the minutes for the seventeen as well.
We've got some time to look over, might make a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session and the regular meeting on four seventeen.
I'll second that. All fair and sound. Then we have payroll to approve, the amount of two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
And I make a motion, we approve payroll in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and sixty-three cents. I'll second that.
All fair and sound. And, like we were talking, payrolls and claims, all the same thing, and we're just approving them because that's what all of our doing is saying, these are what you gave us, so we're approving these numbers that you gave us. Whether they're right or not, how do we know, but we're putting our name on it. And we're approving them.
You have to say that when I'm turning in really high claims and stuff.
Yeah.
It's jelly fall, I wish you would.
Okay.
At this time?
Hmm?
At this time?
Yeah.
Two million dollars?
Yeah, I think we... All right, we need to acknowledge and receive the payroll claims accounts payable report in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and four dollars and six cents.
I make a motion, we acknowledge we received the payroll claims in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, six oh four oh seven.
I'll second that. All fair and sound. Yeah, Julie's not here, but she reported that that all is almost done, it's like they're ready to release the building finally, that it's...
Well, and that was a, there's one claim in there for the contractor, I think, for six hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Um, that's one of the, one of the big ones.
Major, yeah.
They need to shoot up the two million?
Yep.
And then there's the US forty-one, that's TIF money though, but we'd still have to go through them.
Right, yeah. All right, we have accounts payable then, we have the, um, claims, I mean, sorry, claims to pay in the amount of two million, nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. And the big part of this are the items we were just talking about, the, we had the building burned, the ambulance building, and all of the processes due there with the ambulances and everything. All that money's been received in from insurance or the process anyway, but this is just paying the final bills in the building. I think, I have not heard officially, but I think it has been released, I think they were finishing up there the other day, and I talked to her, so it should be, should be all done and all passed now.
I make a motion, we approve claims in the amount of two million, nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
All right.
Okay. Don't get them that big, very... Okay, um... In the new business, we have a request for a check, out-of-cycle check, like a couple in there?
There's a copy of them, yeah. There's three of them.
Okay. Are these today?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm not used to seeing these, they're good, I like them. Have one to Caitlin Wells, the amount of two thousand dollars. And, what is that for?
Probably Casa.
Cops, it's code one.
Casa.
Oh, okay.
She's the Casa director.
Gotcha, okay.
Unless she's something else too.
Dawn Creek, two thousand, same thing, I'm guessing. And Hannah Clark, two thousand. Motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve the three out-of-cycle checks as presented by the...
I'll second that.
All fair and sound. Okay.
The next one is a traveler's claim, and it's just FYI.
Okay. Okay.
He has a bed of his, uh, bed...
Yep, we saw that one. Yep, we did. All right. Then we have a...
An independent contract agreement for the two girls that we just paid.
We just signed, yeah, okay. Okay. We have just copied their contract, didn't we?
Yeah, I need the...
Need to prove?
It's their same salary as usual, with a thirty-day opt-out if you're unhappy with their service.
Okay.
It's the same one they had last year.
Okay. So you're okay with them, then?
Assuming you're okay with paying them, yes.
Okay. Don't have your choice, do we?
Unless you can find somebody else who wanted to do that job.
Yeah.
It's a tough job.
Yeah. Okay. We have the motion, and, um, we authorized the checks already, so I guess we just...
This is for the next year.
This is coming out, so it's the same money, same thing, so I think we just need to do that, then?
There was three checks that fell in two agreements.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve the contracts with Hannah Clark and with Cathy Wells for the Casa services for the county at the rate of two thousand dollars for the services.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
All right.
Only requires my signature, so I'm sure. All right. And then Gibson Hotel, do you hear?
Gibson, the one contract is for the ambulance service, and the other one's for the courthouse. I talked to Randy about them, and he said he advises us to have them because they've already saved us a bunch of money.
Okay.
And I just need your signature, Jim, after that.
Okay. So the motion approved these contracts?
They expire tomorrow.
One of them for ninety dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Yeah, that's one bigger.
Other for twelve hundred, twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
I made the motion, we approved the Gibson contracts, one for the courthouse and one for the service.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound. Then utility service agreement?
You guys have a copy, but I don't have a copy.
I do have one, I got the tabs here, this, this is the one to sign, apparently.
That's the one you've already signed?
Ah, okay.
It was not approved in a commissioner's meeting.
Oh, council meeting?
Commissioner's meeting.
Or we haven't approved this yet? Okay.
So we need to get it wrapped right up.
Oh, okay.
I think these were the...
Body cams.
Body cams, or something like that, Jason.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. We have a request here for, it was a grant, right?
No, it's not a grant.
It's not a grant?
That's what I was thinking we talked about, I told them, but they can't find anything.
The prosecutor's paying for it, if you remember.
Oh, okay, okay.
They can't find anything in the minutes that we ever talked about this, so...
Yeah, I don't know how I would've even had the opportunity to sign it if I hadn't.
You didn't know we did?
Jason brought the contract to you on the thirteenth.
To me? Yeah, yeah, so I don't know how we would've signed it without approving that on the thirteenth, but nothing in the minutes about it. Okay, well, let's do that now, then, and I make the motion that we approve the, uh, the contract, uh, with utility associates as requested by the Sheriff's Department.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound. It's already signed, you don't need, he's copied it back, he wants you to copy it back, okay.
I like my copy.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know how they ever would've gotten it.
I remember talking about it in the council, but I don't remember talking about it.
I was thinking we did, but we can't find it.
Okay. All right, um...
Now, this is from Jason, it's for the four twenty-four meeting, but... This request for a grant application was not signed by you guys.
Okay.
LCC on that opioid restricted.
Okay. Has that been approved?
I believe it, you'll see in a minute, it was.
I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure we approved this.
It didn't get a signature.
Oh, okay.
Because Stephanie, I think, was here to present the...
Yeah, that's that money that Stephanie has to bring to you guys.
Up here and presented this grant, and we approved it, so...
All right. Uh, the only other new business I have, I got a message from Senator Gary the other day. He was working on getting the limit raised on the innkeeper's tax. Many of the counties in the state were at eight percent, there were several counties that were still five percent. They'd come in at different times, for a while, the, led, the legislature in the state was approving some counties to create a CDC, and then at some point, they just created a general agreement for counties who wanted to have commission business commission to do so. There were two separate groups, those approved individually by legislation and those approved by the Uniform Approval Act. So he got it passed to allow all of them to go to eight percent, we're currently at five percent. That eight percent, going to eight percent from five percent would create about another a hundred thousand, probably, for commission business commission, that's all innkeeper's tax, that's all people who come to the county, spend the night in a hotel, they pay five percent, then now it would be eight percent for that innkeeper's tax, and that goes only for, um, attracting tourism, tourism and protecting the tourist assets. The commission business commission currently now takes care of one bridge a year, either by replacing a road for, or painting in the last two years, or last year, I guess, and coming here, we've sited bridges as well. Uh, the exciting part for me for this is, this is an opportunity for the outside folks now to contribute, to help take care of the facets that we have. And, um, there's no taxes that I can see where local people would pay any more tax, unless they spend the night in a hotel, but if they're locally, wouldn't do that very often, or have family coming in, so, um... So where, our limit now is up to eight percent, like all the rest of the counties in the, in the state, ours is currently five, so I would make the motion that we ask the council to approve the entries in the innkeeper's tax, to take it from the five percent that it is to the now legalized eight percent.
And I will second that.
All fair and sound. The hopeful is, Randy can hear, the hopeful is, now, because we have, that was repairs on those covered bridges coming out of the county highway fund, lots of the times, that the CDC doesn't have. Now, I hope this will free up another fifty thousand dollars by the CDC taking on it, instead of one, maybe two, or maybe even three bridges a year, and that would free up another fifty thousand for the highway department to use it on the roads that we need so desperately, so I think that'd be a good opportunity. So I'll take that then with your approval to the council meeting and, uh, ask their approval, then, that we have voted on that, and we have, uh, agreed to ask them to take it to the eight percent. Okay, I don't have any old business, do you guys have any old business? You got anything to get there, ma'am?
Uh, no, I've got, Jason's got his regular monthly report, and I've got some stuff.
Okay. Well, let's go to department reports, then. Randy, you're first on this time on this list. How'd that happen?
I don't know.
Man.
No wonder it's snowed yesterday for hay on the street.
It is freezing over, isn't it?
I have a out-of-cycle check also, for the Veterans, Veteran Tree Service.
Did they get a voucher of the bridge?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
They got the, the big tree down, there's one more I wanted to...
Okay.
But he don't climb, and his bucket won't reach his, so you don't give him that money to...
Okay.
Contact me.
If you remember us talking about this, we didn't have a crooked tree hanging over Boucher Bridge, so they got it done? Okay?
About seven hundred dollars.
Well, that's not bad at all, they just left it in the, in the field there?
Yeah, they just left it.
Okay, that people said it was fine, I checked with them again.
Okay.
So, what it was, was a big, I think a sycamore tree, I think, that's really bent, hanging over Boucher Bridge, really threatening the bridge. None of us could cut that bridge down because of its up, and then about ten feet up off the ground or so, it really took, it took a lean toward the, the bridge, so we hired Veterans Tree Service to come take that tree down. People who lived there actually had requested it, and they said it'd be fine, just leave it in their field, and they would take care of the, the tree, so that's what we did. So I make a motion, we approve a check of seven hundred dollars for Veterans Tree Shrimming Service.
I'll second that.
All fair and sound. All right, what else you got?
We've got Ten O'Clock Road, Coxville Road, from forty-one to Rosedale. Ten Fifty North, Tangier Road, from forty-one, uh, to ten twenty-five, we got part of ten twenty-five done. Eight Seventy-Five East is done, five hundred East is done, Niceville Road's done, four hundred East, New Discovery, and Ferndale Road, it's all done.
Eight hundred done now, south?
Yeah, it's been done.
I know, we was going back to work on it, it wasn't quite, quite done yet.
We started on Leatherwood Road, uh, Thursday afternoon, and started on nine hundred east, or east this morning, and nine hundred south.
Great.
And, uh...
I did see they were out with, with the shovels, shoveling, I thought we weren't doing that anymore.
They did Niceville, they used the shovels.
They got so bad a shape.
Okay.
I just shut down the graders last week, and there's a couple of hickus out, hand patching too.
Okay.
So you had the machines and the shovels going on?
Yeah.
Four machines all working out?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Well, we're gonna be working three of them this week.
Okay.
I don't have enough to put in the other one.
Gotcha.
Without shutting something down.
Okay.
But we need to service some two, so we're gonna service one each day.
Gotcha.
We got one in today, so we'll have one to swap out with.
You can sit down there if you don't have to.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Been sitting most of the day. Truck number thirty-three, the new truck, the damage?
Yeah.
Twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars, of course, it's got a thousand dollar deductible, so that leaves us twenty-three, two ninety-one.
And that's completed, twenty-four thousand is complete? I'm surprised it's not more than that, it's pretty decent.
They got in there, if it's not enough, let them know if something comes out more.
What we're talking about is one of the drivers, uh, was doing a road, and, whatever the word is, dumping, dumping stone.
Spreading gravel.
Had a, had the bed up, and got under a tree, and the tree limb was too low, and it hit the top, the flames of the tree, uh, did some damage, the bed, I mean, did some damage to the bed.
And the cab.
And the cab, and lights on the cab, yeah. But, there's insurance.
So, I got, Bronzer coming in the morning to look at it, and, uh, Volvo will be there Wednesday with their estimator to see if you wanna have nothing to do.
Okay.
Then, that's all I have, unless you guys have something for me.
No. Um, we might report that we, uh, commissioners, Randy went and drove roads, uh, to try to pick five, actually about seven miles, we thought we could get up, and price it down now, about, worth seven miles or so, a bit for our next community property grant, so we got those, those done. When's that due? When's that grant due, man?
Uh, July.
July, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Nothing needed from us?
No, no thanks, so.
Okay.
You guys have a good evening.
You too, Randy, thanks.
Thanks, Randy.
Take care.
Emma cleaned up pretty good for prom, she, uh, she and Hannah did, she and Hannah did okay.
Yeah, they did, they had done real good, I thought.
All right, Chris O'Brien, is he right there?
I think, yeah. I just kept his name on the list.
Oh, okay, never mind, never mind, just have him on the list, okay. Jason Frager, got a grant application.
And then just, if you look farther down, it says monthly, it's in there too.
Okay. Sure.
I don't have a grant application, I don't think.
That was that one, that one.
That was for the medical liners, last time.
I'm just going, I'll watch on the paper here, okay.
Didn't bring my glasses.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Tough to say, I...
Jail count today is sixty-eight, county inmates fifty-four, DOCs five, we have two away, and seven out of county, which I, those are mostly, I think you asked last time, they're Sullivan County inmates, a lot of them. Uh, reported collections year-to-date is thirty-three thousand, thirty-five dollars and five cents. Inmate billing year-to-date is ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. And that's, uh, I'll ask you guys if they have any questions.
Jim, definitely.
Yeah, I thought, while you was here, it'd be a good time to discuss. I know even before you were sheriff, we've been asked several times about closing streets in Bridgeton during the bridge festival. And it's always been a difficult thing to try to figure out when you have one main street going...
Right.
All the way through town, how it...
Right.
But I do realize that you guys have been under a lot of pressure to do something too, because you get that many thousands of people, and you have a soft target there, and without you guys being able to control traffic and letting vehicles drive through the people all the time, I understand your concern. I had talked to Shay, probably two or three weeks ago, about this, him and I discussed some of it. We had thought we need to have a meeting probably with the people, landowners in Bridgeton, to see what their suggestions are. We need to try to do it without affecting as many people as we can. I'd also, we've discussed this with Nick, and because he would have to be writing the ordinances to keep people off the street, we need to set a time to close the roads and reopen them. I don't know for sure about you having the manpower, because that is also going to create a problem is those barricades being able to set them up, take them back down, and someone to man them, so someone don't just... It's not gonna do any good to set up barricades and not be able to man them, because if someone wants to drive through the crowd and start running over people, they're just gonna get out and move the barricade, so...
Correct.
That is something else that needs discussed, is how, how do you plan on man them, and then we're also going to have to have signs. I have talked to some of the owners about the last place to turn around. We have actually, in the last year or two, done some checking in different directions you come in from Bridgeton, and it actually takes less time to go out and say, go around south through, like... So... Always predicting that little town, what is the name of that town out there? It's due...
I don't know which direction you're going.
It will be out across, it cuts over from nine hundred to School Road. But anyway, go in that direction around, it actually takes less time to go around, than it does drive through the crowd and get through town.
Yeah.
Uh, same way with coming in north out of town, you can go Raccoon Road and come right back around, you can either continue on the Mansfield or come back around to the east side of Bridgeton. A couple of things Nick and I have discussed is, the people that live in Bridgeton will have to have some type of a pass...
Absolutely.
That they can go back and forth to work, and it won't affect their daily lives, but it will cut down on a lot of traffic trying to drive through all the people. The vendors and landowners, which they already pretty well do it now, is, I assume they'll have to either use golf carts or side by sides to get their product, because a lot of them rent off the parking lots, they will set up like a box trailer with their product in it. And, I'd say ninety-five percent of them now either use a side by side or a golf cart, so we will have to permit side by sides and golf carts, vendors and landowners to use them, uh, to go through the...
Those aren't really a concern, safety?
Yeah, it's, it's the vehicles that is a concern, I understand that. There was one or two other things, I should've wrote myself a note. I'm drawing a blank now, but...
What about people who provide parking that live in Bridgeton?
Well, that's, we, I have discussed this with Shay, and there is, there's one, I think we've got it worked out, so it's gonna, not going to affect ninety-five percent of people. One person, there's two people that will affect some, I've already talked to one of them. She's eighty-four years old, and she said, "To be honest with you, I don't, I don't have to have that money, I just, I don't have to get somebody to fix my yard after the festival's over, and it's not a problem." So there's one other I need to talk to, but we need to set a date to have a meeting with all the owners that own land in Bridgeton, and kinda get some input from them, give them some ideas of what we're thinking about doing, and...
Absolutely.
How we're doing it, uh, don't know, and the sooner we do it, the better, because that will allow them to get in touch with their vendors and say, "Okay, this is gonna be the new rule," so we need to set some times that you're gonna close the road and open it. And we're not, we probably should discuss this where Randy left, too, is possibly some signage. We're gonna have to have some signage coming into town if it's the last place to turn around, and...
Right.
Go the other way, because you're not gonna be allowed to go through town, and we may have to tweak it next year after we've done it, but I do understand your concern that something has to be done, it's getting, when you have thousands of people, and I've been through there enough that people are unaware of their surroundings, too. They're so involved with the festival, with the food, they're standing, looking at something, and don't even realize a vehicle's even come up behind them. So, um, any certain time that would work better or not better for you to have a meeting? I'm kinda thinking six thirty, seven o'clock of an evening?
I'd make it work, it's up to whenever you get everybody together.
Probably a Tuesday or Thursday with all the ballgames and stuff going on right now would probably work better and not mess up somebody's weekend, if you could...
Sure.
Get with me, I could, we could run that in the paper, maybe, and possibly, let me see, to give them two weeks to look at it, the next commissioner's meeting's on the fifteenth, so around the eighteenth, if, that'd be a Thursday, that would allow it to be in the paper twice? So, will that, can you work that in with your schedule?
Yeah, I'd make it work.
Okay. So I guess if we can put in a paper that we're gonna have a meeting, we can have, right there, my wife's store there, if you want. Everyone can meet there, we can get some ideas, I have some maps of the streets, and you and I will go over it, I have kinda gone over it some with Shay, and we'll kinda go over it, put our heads together, and listen to what the public has to say, and, I wanna have the least amount of impact on people that we can, but also, uh, don't want several people end up getting killed, because, and it's not just necessarily somebody that's intentionally doing it, and I know a few years ago, a friend of mine got hit by an elderly lady that hit the gas instead of the brake, and, but it was him and some other people over at the hillcar.
Yeah. We've been pretty fortunate.
We have. So, do you wanna go ahead and set that meeting in for, is the eighteenth, nineteenth?
Jim, did you, were, were you interested in going to this meeting?
I, no.
Been busy?
Dan and I have done the drive-through before, I'm fine with them working out and just bringing it to us, what they're...
Okay, 'cause you're committed on the eighteenth.
Okay, Bruce has not rode it with me yet, he's been busy with, uh, taxes, I know, and if you would like to get with me sometime, if you have time between now and then before the meeting, so I can kinda show you what we've discussed.
Yeah, I see, yeah.
What day are you thinking?
That's fine, thanks. The Thursday after the, you don't have...
If Pam thinks that works, then...
Thursday's the eighteenth. But, that's the answer.
Jim said he doesn't need to go, so if he doesn't need to go, then it's all right.
I've, I've written with Dan, who we're talking about, but really, that's up, to me, it's always up to you guys to work out a plan, and if the Sheriff's Department is okay with it, bring it to us, and I don't know why we would disagree with that, if you guys work it all out, so I'm off, I'm fine with that.
And there's no one using the store, okay, will that work with you, and say seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
On the, the eighteenth is a Thursday, correct?
I'm sure I have something going on, but we can make it work.
All right. And Shay, since he works down there a big part of the time?
Yeah, yeah, I'll definitely have...
Because he's more familiar with how things work right now than...
I'll double-check with him, make sure it's, that works.
And between now and then, I guess you'd need to be thinking about extra help and how you're going to man these barricades some up in the morning, and make sure you get... And I have briefly spoke with UPS, but not FedEx, about deliveries, and basically, they explained to me what they've done in, uh, in the past at Mansfield, is just set a drop point, and a driver would go there and use like a gator or something and make his deliveries. And they, I, I think, was it last year that they done that in Mansfield the year before?
I think so.
So...
Yeah, we talked about the only concern, but, no, in Bridgeton, there are some homeowners still that will have to get to the barricade and have to back out.
And that's what Nick, Nick had made a comment discussing with him, he said you could just give them a pass, that they have the right...
Just have to have somebody there to let them in.
To go, yes.
Close the barricade time. Both the barricade time and stuff.
And we can't have concrete permanent barricades just because of fire protection and all that, it's gonna have to be, and then...
That's what I was thinking originally, but...
Yeah, it, it's, it's not, it's not feasible, because you would have to have a forklift or something.
Yeah, yeah.
And where you close the roads, I mean, and if there's a fire or something, one of the guys gonna jump out of a fire truck and go. We don't have any problem when there's someone hurt or something, when there's red lights and a star and everybody is quick to get out of the way, it's...
Yeah.
When just public traffic driving through, a quiet car, nobody even hears it.
You don't necessarily have to have armed people that would be at those gates, would you, could you just hire?
Probably should be, no.
Deputize a couple of, or some people without...
And, and that's all they don't...
Permits for gun permits, I mean, they'd just be...
Every sheriff officers, but how many do you have reserve officers?
Seven.
Okay.
But they're probably pretty busy during festivals.
Yeah, we're all, we're pretty, pretty tight on manpower that week, so.
That's what I'm saying.
We'd have to figure...
Situation where you just have to hire...
I had a discussion with Lee today, they just don't realize the extra cost of having the festival, the county makes no money off the festival.
Yeah.
So the TML helps pay for extra officers and extra ambulance, and all those things that have to be extra just to keep public safety taken care of, so.
Yep.
Well, then you get ten days with all of them working without any time off, and over time too, or top that, but you don't wanna get ten days straight, but, we'll get together and try to hash some of that out, and figure out what we can and can't do, and then between now and the meeting with the landowners and townspeople and...
Sounds good, I got it written down.
Get their side, and, so between now and then, holler at me and, you and I and Shay can go, I know Shay has a pretty good feel for what he thinks and a way we can all have our heads together.
Was he excited about it?
Well, I think he thinks in the long run, it's gonna save a lot of headaches.
Yeah.
People getting hit and bumped, and, and it's not just that only, I mean, every year seems like somebody gets hit and bumped or hurt.
Yeah.
We have a lawsuit using against us whether somebody got hurt or not, it seems like.
Lawyer's waiting to do it.
I heard you one.
I think that's all I have for you.
Anything else?
No, appreciate you, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Shay. All righty, Julie's not here, Mary Ann, contracts and open positions.
Well, Pam and I have discovered that there are some contracts that need to be signed, but we don't have copies of them in our office, and we need the original ones in our office.
And who knows whether it was made or might not be, so if you can't find the original contracts, how do we resolve that, Nick, what do we do?
Uh, maybe reach out to another side of it that we're contracted with, they might be able to provide a copy, the vendor.
Explain that the owner's office at that time, maybe didn't file them, or if they did, we can repair them.
Well, she thinks some of them is at the sheriff's office, one in particular, so we don't, it doesn't have a...
Sometimes they get carried in here, they get signed, and then they get carried back out, and we don't get copies.
Sure. Okay, good luck.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, do what you gotta do.
And then the other one is, we, someone in the courthouse is hiring a new position. She didn't go about the right way, that it needs to be posted for five days on the bulletin board in the courthouse, and, and...
Is the position approved by the council to, is it an official position?
Someone is leading.
Regular position.
Okay, so it's already established.
But eight-nine of the employee policy has a, a way that it's supposed to be done. We'd like to send out a memo.
Yeah.
Remind everybody.
I included a copy in your pile.
Yeah, it's really important with the government job, that we follow that.
They posted it on Facebook before they did anything.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm okay with that, we didn't hurt to get the word out, it's going to be, it's still gonna be posted.
Yeah, it needs to go through several different steps before it gets to that point.
Yes, I agree.
That's all I have.
Okay.
That memo gonna go out from you guys, or you want us to sign the memo or whatever?
John Cornell here? I didn't see him.
I didn't either.
Figure out.
If you guys wanna approve, Jim to sign it, if he wants to stop in and sign it, that we can do the memo and he can come in and sign it.
What, what do you guys think will get, we're going back to the positions, whether that memo should be under her signature or ours, I mean, I just think if you're gonna get more, I don't say enforcement.
Yeah, I, I think probably...
If, if, you know, if it comes from us, you think it'll be more effective than coming from you, I, I think that we should assign the memo once you guys wrap it up.
Okay.
Jim can just stop by.
You guys can stop that, let me know when you get it done and I'll come in.
You can sign it or initial it or whatever.
We don't need to take any action on that, it's just normal operating procedure, so it's okay.
It's just, anyway, it's just reiterating, please follow the imp...
But, yeah.
We can do that. Tell the comments, you guys got something?
Do.
What can we do for you?
Slaven Road.
Uh-huh.
Any idea of when something's gonna be done to that road?
Uh, Randy's not here, um...
I noticed he left pretty quickly.
Oh, he always does.
That's not unusual.
No, no. Are you my help?
We don't seem, we don't, yes.
Okay.
We don't seem to get anything, every time we go to talk to Randy over the last fifteen years, it's been, the approval's already been done, the budget's made for it, we can't do anything about it this year. So they come along with the truck, and take the shovel, throw a pile in the hole, and by afternoon that's pulled out from the people driving along.
Yeah, we, we had stopped doing that procedure, Randy, I was surprised to see your truck out doing it the other day, and Randy said it's just because the roads, of course, this spring's just, one, one of those springs, but, but we have enough, we bought two more of the regular, real patching machines, the patcher hose and does a good job, um, we only have enough manpower actually now apparently to operate three of them, but that's not a bad thing in that one of them can be serviced the week it's there, that they're working, so, um, I, I'll, I'll talk to them about that and see. We don't want that off the truck in the hole stuff anymore either, we know it doesn't last either, unless you get it packed in, we'll get, gotta blow out the whole route, or gotta do it right, takes so much time. So I'll check on it and see where we are with that, but as far as repaving it, that's not even on the, on the horizon, we, we go out, we just went out, and as bad as beating up in the holes it's got, it's, it's not close to the top, it's up fifteen miles of, of the county, so, but I was out, I drove that just a week and a half ago, I suppose, so, my go truck, typically I'll, I'll, I'll drive a road, and I was on there about a week and a half ago, but I know it's beaten up again, and...
On the hill, the Daly Hill, is just absolutely disastrous.
Yep. And that being one of the things that we can pave ourselves, but I'll talk to Randy and see where we are with that and bring his attention in. I'm sorry you feel like you, like you won't talk to your, you're not getting a straight story from him, but, but I can't answer for him on that, I don't know, but if you, like in the past, we've, you've contacted me in the past about the road, just don't hesitate to do that, if we can take care of something, we will.
Well, my concern is we have at least two, the namesake of the road is in pretty bad health, so ambulance to get up to them, coming up that hill...
Every road has to be traveled like that, every road is like that, yeah, I understand. They're working on it every day, just out every day, so that's all I can say.
Well, can you give me an idea of when we might have something done?
No, no. Would have no idea knowing that.
What is scheduled?
Even if you make the best, even if you make the best plans, there's no guarantee that holds it to that, and that's why you can't promise, 'cause you don't know if it's gonna have bridge fail, coverage fail, or anything else to go with that, you just don't know. So all, all I can say is that, that's not, not a forgotten road, and...
Well, we feel that way.
Well...
We feel forgotten, because it's been fifteen years, and at one point in time, when they were working on the Daly Hill on, on forty-one, if I remember correctly, the state gave money for that to be repaired, but instead of just repairing our road, which the money was for, it was distributed over other roads throughout the county.
That wasn't ever committed to your road, any of those funds that come in, they, you were an unofficial, your road was unofficial, deter. And the only problem from the state is whatever damages occurs to that unofficial deter will be paid for, and that's what they, that's what they do, so, they...
Well, it never was done, I mean, they didn't do anything. We didn't, after it was over, there was no, there was no patching after that was over, there was no nothing. It went all year with not even touching a thing.
Well, that's not the way I remember, 'cause I remember we were out there and we paved it, in fact, on top of it.
When even was it?
What?
When they...
No, I got in an argument with a farmer over that road, and I said, "Why are you running our road, why don't you stay on the highway?" "Oh, too much traffic, got you on the highway, and I'm semis."
Yeah.
And, but what I'm saying is when the, the hill was shut down, because they were redoing, re-straitening out the hill, the road that we have was, as they're saying to us, an unofficial road, but there was funding for that to be repaired for the damages that was done. It never was repaired.
No.
We didn't get any repair done. So...
Yeah, I'll talk to Randy, see where we are with that, I'll bring that to his attention and see what his plans are.
Randy's secretary tells us not to come in the office anymore.
Are you rude when you go in?
No, no, but we can do it.
Well, that's what I'm asking, why would she tell you that not to come in the office?
Because they say Randy's busy, they're tired of dealing with it.
Not to bother him, not to be bothering her, and not to bother him coming in the office anymore.
It's public office, you go anytime you want to.
We have that way too.
She's had a bad hair day.
Yeah, well...
I've been there twice this year, you know?
I can't speak to that, I don't, I don't know, but it's, it's a public office, you feel free to go anytime you need to, and conduct yourself in an appropriate manner, I would expect her to conduct herself in an appropriate manner also.
But she was rude, you know?
Happens, happens.
I go, I go every year, "Hey Randy, any possibility?" "Nah, what you got is what you get." "Now I told you that this past summer, you was on vacation coming home, riding down the highway, I asked you if you would please drive our road, coming up off of forty-one, buddy, it'll rot in your teeth, it's bad."
I'll let him know, see where it's at.
There's holes all over, they have been down our road blacktopping, you know, chunk, chunk.
No, I don't like that fucking thought.
She couldn't believe it, I said, "Ma'am, yes ma'am." But, so I have a feeling every year, I go say something to Randy, our workover comes from here and goes back down here on the bottom.
No, I can, that's, that's not accurate.
Well, I know, but...
It may feel that way, it may feel that way, I understand, may look that way, I understand, but nah, don't operate that way, we don't deal with personal...
Thirty-nine years.
Yes, we, we...
It runs atrocious, but they're gonna get off, pay taxes, just like all the rest of us.
Okay, we appreciate you coming in, I'll talk to Randy, see where we are.
And one of the things, you know, the fifteen year thing, and again, we, we feel it, we, we, we understand totally, we got four hundred miles of road, okay, and we just talked about it a few minutes ago.
That's a blacktop.
If we're lucky, yes, that's blacktop road, if we're lucky, we can do seven miles a year repaving, okay?
Here's what I don't understand.
So, no, let, sir, let me finish, let me finish. So we got seven miles a year we can do, and we've got four hundred total miles, all right? So even if you multiply that out, okay, we do seven miles a year times twenty years, that's only a hundred and forty of the four hundred miles, and so even a twenty year cycle, we're more in a forty to fifty year cycle between being able to repave roads, so, once a road is repaved, it may be another forty years before it's gonna get repaved again. That's just the reality of it, okay? It's a dollars and cents game, and people wanna say all the time, you always say it's all about money, well, it is all about money, if we don't have the money, we can't fix the roads, okay? And so, we're just in a situation where we can only recite, only repave roads when we can, okay, and that means that fifteen years is quite frankly, is not very, many years since it's been repaved, okay? So we try to do the best we can...
It wasn't repaved fifteen years ago, that's when we started asking for it to be adjusted.
Well, I'm just saying though, but fifteen years is not the forty years.
We paid for, we paid half the cost of the road to be put in, we shared costs to have it all put in.
Yeah.
And I think everyone on the road put in two or three thousand dollars to have the road done.
Yeah.
And the agreement was, we'll take care of the road.
Yep, that's how it works, and Brandon, Brandon light up holding on in as well, I'll check and see where we are.
Who's taking care of it?
But I'm just saying...
And the other thing is, you, you blacktopped the road for the Amish going from Niceville or...
We, we hear that, we didn't, we didn't believe them, we didn't believe the Amish at all.
You guys didn't blacktop that road?
Not for the Amish, no.
Not for the Amish?
But the Amish have tore the road up, was pouring.
Yeah, yeah, and traffic on your road has torn that road up too, that road just didn't disappear on its own, so traffic does that. Do the Amish beat up roads? Yes, it does, but we haven't paid anything for Amish, we hear that all the time.
No, but they're patching the roads.
I'm sorry?
You're patching their roads.
We're patching all the roads.
Not, yeah, we're not patching...
Not ours.
We'll get to it eventually.
Yeah, we, we, we go down that, so, we'll, we'll talk to Randy, let you know where we are.
Okay.
Thanks.
If you please.
Okay. Anybody else have any public comments?
Well, he didn't show up, the, the, Park County Missionary Association would like to be...
That's this Friday, this Thursday, so we need to approve it now.
Yeah, and I will email him if you guys approve it.
I'm making a motion, we authorize the use of the courthouse for the steps and outside for the Minnesota Association Labor.
I'll second that.
Okay, fair.
Thank you. It's called Saturday noon. Look at the...
Anybody else got anything?
No, I'm making a motion.
Thank you.